Good evening, everyone. I'd like to reconvene our Board of Supervisors meeting from earlier today. And we did not have a closed meeting. So we can please note that public comment is coming before the public hearings. And because of that, public comment is about really anything you want to. Don't make it specific to the public hearing, which you'll have another opportunity to speak to. If that makes sense, I hope. All right. I'll go ahead and open public comment. Anyone wishing to speak can please be recognized and come up and give us your name and your district. Yes, sir.
Ron McLeod Jackson District. And this was a spontaneous thought that I had tonight when I was actually thinking about the public hearing or whatever. But I think it's something that needs to be said and hopefully we can do something about it. It's that I was in Richmond this weekend to visit my son and his daughter-in-law or whatever. And we went out for breakfast. And I was thinking tonight, when they come up here, if we want to go out for breakfast, we have to go to Culpeper, Warren, Loudon, or Fauquier County. We're supposedly a tourist area. And we have gotten ourselves to the point where someone comes here to stay and they have to go to another county to get breakfast? It's humorous, but it's not in that we don't have a tourist committee or anything that kind of analyzes whatever what we do tourist-wise. But it's something we need to think about because it is. It's laughable in that, yeah, come to Rappahannock, but bring your own breakfast. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
I look forward to more comments like that from Ron. That one's easy. That was like my favorite Ron McLeod speech ever.
Well, I won't be quite as humorous as Ron.
Name and district, please.
My name is Karen Hunt. I'm in Jackson District.
Luke, you get a bright light on the front of your camera.
On the camera?
On your camera. Light is on.
My name is Karen Hunt. I live in Jackson District. The proposed sign ordinance currently with the Board of Supervisors for consideration has generated much public concern, including quite a number of letters to the editor of the Rappahannock News, a petition signed by close to 80 residents, a very well-attended Board of Supervisors public hearing with much citizen comment, all of which overwhelmingly express the desire to not expand our sign ordinance beyond the limits of our current ordinance. As it sits with you right now, there are proposed changes that create several new sign categories and significantly increase the amount of signage that would be permitted throughout the county, going well beyond the limits that have been in place for decades. Citizens submitted specific comments and a red line draft to the Board of Supervisors in September 28th of '23 detailing changes that better suit our county and reflect the protection our scenic resources and reflect protection of our scenic resources in accordance with our comp plan. Significant public concerns have been expressed about the proposed expansion of off-premacy signs, temporary signs, including hay bale signs, the exclusion of art and certain flags from the ordinance, allowing animated commercial zone signs, vehicle signs, and other miscellaneous provisions. Exempting art and flags from the ordinance is a recipe for disaster. As was astutely pointed out in previous public testimony, this would put a difficult and unnecessary burden on staff. And the commenter at the time said, and I quote, "Please don't do that. The reason we are updating our sign ordinance is to comply with the Reed-Gilbert decision. We do not want to be inviting problems in such a nebulous area as interpreting what constitutes art versus commercial advertising dressed up as art." As pointed out in the citizens' red line draft, how is a flag different than a pole sign or a banner? Why do we need to add a new definition for flags? Why are we including foreign national and historic flags? We need to simply regulate size and number and leave it at that. We currently do not allow animated signs, and we shouldn't start now. They are not compatible with our rural scenic county. We do not want to be expanding the number and duration of temporary signs. We should keep the current limits of one sign with a 30-day limit and a possible 30-day extension. We should not simply take what had been an upper limit for wayside stands and apply it across the board. The size, scope, and duration here are excessive, and I urge you to reconsider this. The medium of a temporary sign, as in hay, should not be the basis for granting what amounts to a carve-out for those with access to a particular type of format in a particular location. I should not be able to ask my farmer to line up my hay bales in my front field along Viewtown Road or any other road for the purposes of circumventing size limits placed on other types of temporary signage. That provides a select minority with a huge megaphone. Off-premacy signs currently require a Board of Supervisors special exception requirement, and that should remain so. At the last hearing, Supervisor Donna Hay asked, "How can the Board of Supervisors do a better job at outreach to the public earlier in the process?" I would suggest that before this matter is further addressed or comes to any vote, that you give full consideration to the citizen recommendations and that they be posted on Board docs for notice to the community. I would also please urge you to include the citizen recommendations and any proposed language going forward to be considered by the Board. And as a last note on a separate issue, on the right-of-way ordinances, the Board of Zoning Appeals has spoken. There is nothing wrong with those 34-year-old ordinances that have served us well, and please don't change them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Catherine Ishi, Piedmont. I know I've said this before, but it bears repeating. It's always preferred when community members can be in agreement and can be on the same page as our county staff. I know unfortunately, obviously, that isn't always the way it works out. But in a small community like ours, our staff has to wear many hats, and many demands are actually made on them. And it is true, sometimes we disagree with their actions or positions. But their dedication and service to our county remain recognized and truly much appreciated. So hopefully, we'll be able to be in agreement more times than we disagree. But in any event, thank you again for serving the citizens of Rappahannock, to all of our staff. Also, to our Board members, if you can really appreciate the time and dedication it takes to do these essentially volunteer positions you've taken on, thank you, all of you, for the service to us all. I'd like to very briefly address two topics tonight. First, thanks again to Mr. Curry for his commitment to doing a deep dive into detailed comments that myself and several others have submitted on the sign ordinance. There, as you just heard, a lot of complex issues there that have received substantial attention at the public hearings, both before this Board and the Planning Commission. I trust that the Board will consider the community recommendations carefully and agree not to allow the proliferation of signs of Rappahannock by expanding the sign ordinance. On a different topic, that of the decision last week by the BZA to uphold the appeal of Ms. Haynes, excuse me, and to keep the current ordinances in place, which require a 50-foot public right-of-way before additional subdivisions of certain properties on narrow secondary roads. The BZA, supported by council, in their findings of record stated as follows, and I quote, "The BZA has received no evidence that the ordinances are inconsistent with state-enabling legislation, or that the Board of Supervisors was not otherwise authorized to enact them. These ordinances as legislative actions of the Board of Supervisors are presumed valid and reasonable, and carry a presumption of correctness," end quote. "The Board of Supervisors should therefore not act to rescind or weaken these ordinances absent compelling evidence that they are in fact not legally defensible. No such case has yet been made. Instead, these ordinances promote legitimate and very important land use policy goals of this county and appear to be consistent with both state law and our county code." Now that the BZA has acted, it's to be hoped that this Board will cease any further attempt to rescind and validate or weaken these very important provisions. Thank you very much again for your service.
Thank you.
Can we talk about breakfast tomorrow?
I know. Quikymart's got a great sandwich. So this settles.
Black Tweed was trying for a long time to serve breakfast, and I just don't think they made it. But I think ours more might be serving breakfast every day.
And Stewart Field has good breakfast sandwiches from April to the end of September during baseball season.
And don't forget, you can also pick up lots of handheld food at the corner store in Sperryville.
I think public comment is still happening.
I know, but sometimes if you don't say these things.
I believe you were coming up. Yes.
Hi, my name's Dee Wines, Piedmont District. And I really hadn't intended to speak tonight, even though I brought comments with me. And oftentimes, I'm finding myself running contrary to my neighbors and other people on the Board. But this is why we're here, to participate and see how things go. So my comments are around the right-of-way issue that's been kind of a hot topic the last month or so, especially after the Board of Zoning Appeals hearing. And so I would like to say that these zoning sections, the two that are referenced, created from a single sentence located in two different parts of the zoning ordinance, and requires that properties meet three criteria in order to subdivide. Those are being a zoning class other than agriculture or conservation, that the road at the property have a right-of-way of 50 feet, and that that right-of-way must extend and be continuous from the property to a state primary highway. I contend that there is virtually no property in the entire county that can satisfy these requirements. You must realize that most, if not all, the right-of-ways on secondary roads are either 30 feet or a variable, but not 50 feet from any property to a county state primary highway. You must also realize that there are only two state primary highways in the entire county. Those are Highway 211 and 231. 522 does not meet the standard because it is technically a U.S. highway and not a state primary highway. So if there's no property in the county that can meet these standards, what is the purpose of the ordinance? Why does it even exist? Because if no property can meet the standard, then all the ordinance is able to do is to restrict the rights to property owners. This is also why I continue to maintain that these code sections negate or nullify whole sections of the zoning ordinance and do not simply restrict potential development, but to kill it before it can even see the light of day, or can be reviewed by the Planning Commission, the Board of Supervisors, or heard in public forums. Second, in recent hearings, there's been a lot of comments about what happens if these sections are rescinded or replaced. People seem to believe that if these sections are eliminated, that somehow the county would be overrun by mass development. I believe this is alarmist rhetoric, and it's also false. The fact is that any subdivision over three lots requires a very thorough multi-phase review process, review and approval process that requires at least two public hearings. So with that as a basis, the zoning ordinance remains very strong and would not be weakened in any way by modifying the subdivision language. Given the position that no property in the county meets the standards of these code sections, I believe these code sections should be replaced with language that addresses the state or condition of the roads rather than the right-of-ways themselves. When people talk about these sections, the common comment goes to the state or condition of the road, that it is narrow, it may be gravel, it may be winding, with no comment about the right-of-way itself. Ultimately, I believe the right-of-way is not the issue at all, but rather the state and condition of the roads in question. The recent language changes suggested by the zoning administrator and the proposed changes to the subdivision ordinance directly address road standards required for subdividing. I believe that these zoning sections have restricted and denied property owners certain rights for 30 years. I do not believe that property owners should be denied rights to their property because some in the county are either resistant to change or don't want anything to change. And lastly, this is some of the comments I brought up at the BZA last week. But I've noticed in public hearings, a common comment from the Board of Supervisors is that we need affordable housing, we need housing, we need housing for teachers and housing for workers. My question remains is where will that housing come from? It will have to come from a subdivision of property, properties such as the recent case on Woodford Road. If you want to provide more housing, you must provide a path to make that possible. Removing, or rather amending, these 30-year-old code sections with more appropriate language will be a step in that direction. I encourage you to take action to adopt language changes for subdivisions, such as the ones recently offered by the zoning administrator, so that the long-term needs of the community can be met and that will also allow the full text of the zoning ordinance to function and be executed as intended. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Constantine, Piedmont District. I just want to follow up and make clear that, at least speaking for myself, and I think for many of our neighbors, we have no problem per se with somebody wanting to build a house on their property. The issue is that this 50-foot right-of-way standard has served the county extremely well in terms of protecting against more, you know, smaller subdivisions. And that is something that has to be considered extremely carefully. I mean, personally, I think I'm sympathetic to the, sorry, your name?
Dee.
Dee Wines. You know, he has a piece of property up the street from us. We have no problem with him building a house on that property. What we have a problem with is him subdividing that property because that's kind of a Pandora's box. So I think we need to think about, you know, very carefully how you, if you're going to alter that type of right-of-way restriction, which is served to restrict who can build where and how much, it has to be done in a more comprehensive way, not anecdotally or not ad hoc. So that's the only point I want to make tonight is just, you know, it has to be done strategically. We all agree, I know all you guys agree, and we all agree, that we want to preserve this county and its rural character and its view sheds and all that. And you've got to be very careful about opening up the camel's nose under the tent and allowing a lot of, you know, subdivision incrementally that suddenly balloons into something we can't control. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheila Gressinger, Hampton District. I want to add to a little bit of what I said earlier today, because I had forgotten to say it. A lot of people are concerned about growth in our county. I will tell you, before Phil Irwin died, he did agree that a little bit of growth was okay. Because, well, I think a lot of people associate with Phil with no growth and all that kind of stuff. But I said, "Phil, how about like 2%?" And he goes, "Oh, well, that might be okay." The other thing I want people to think about truly is that I think our comprehensive plan has done us very well, mainly because one of the main things it has in there is that growth is to occur in and around the villages. Here's what we had the conversation about recently at the BZA. That was around a village, and there was a specific quirk in the way the application was done that it did not go forward. We do need housing. Our comprehensive plan calls for it to be in and around the villages. That's what's protected the rest of the open spaces. The other thing to consider, a lot of people have only been here, say, for 10 years or so. I've been here for 42 years. There were a lot of more houses 40-some years ago and even before that. The Rappahannock News did a story about Woodville, and I tried to find it today, and I couldn't. They talked about how Woodville had been a thriving community with blacksmith shops and doctors and all kinds of things. What do we have at Woodville now? Hardly anything. And then when you think of Sperryville, and you think of Flint Hill, you have houses on their main streets, but they've been converted into offices. I tried to look up another thing that I found before when I researched, is how do villages, how do rural areas grow? People come together and they cluster in houses. And then businesses come, and those businesses then take up the heart of the little town or the little village or area, and then the houses go around the periphery of the whole thing. So that's how our county is developing, and I think it's doing it very well. I think what we need to do is find a way to replace the lost housing that used to exist, and then I think we'd be in a better place. As far as, I said in the morning, some people weren't here. Loudon County let the barn door open decades ago. This will never be Loudon County. Our zoning that we've had in place for years and years have protected us far more than Loudon County ever did. And their growth started 50 years ago or more. I don't know when Dulles started, but with Dulles and all down that corridor. We don't have any central corridor that's coming anywhere. We have Fairfax going into Loudon County. We have Fairfax coming down to Charlottesville. Rappahannock is an oasis. Nothing goes through us or brings commerce through us. John McCarthy used to say, when he was talking to people trying to bring businesses here, he had a good spiel, how wonderful it was, blah, blah. And then they'd say, "Well, where is it?" And he'd point out Rappahannock County. He was like, "Oops, it's nowhere." And there are no transportation systems that would support something coming here. So we have been protected in many, many ways. So that's really just what I want to say. We do need housing. There is a way to do it. It needs to be in and around our villages, and I think we can do it. I would prefer to hear what we can do instead of what we can't do.
Thanks, sir.
Can I make a comment about?
Only if you're. The problem is the folks on.
My short comment is I actually agree with Sheila.
Can you give us your name and your district?
Stoneholt District. I agree with her because I thought too, a while ago, we started talking about the zoning and all that, and that we did create and say that there could be some growth around villages. I thought that was put in probably wrong, or am I wrong? Did we say that?
That's in the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Because I've been here 40-some years. My husband's family grew up here. We have been, I've been coming here since I was a kid. And this is my home, is more than my home, down in Delmore, in Virginia. And I agree, we came here to get away from people, to get away from the crime, get away from cities, get away from, you know, everything. And then I raised my kids here. My kids, like most of us here, my kids have moved on. They can't afford to live here. My son lives in Culpeper. My daughter moved all the way to Louisiana, but that's a big story. By her own metagone. But I think a lot of people, the children need, the parents need to know that, how do all the schools are going to survive? I don't want us to be a, Cleveridge Corner scares me, it really does. And I think that's scaring a lot of people, thinking we don't want Rappahannock to be Cleveridge's Corner. And I agree, we can't. It can't be. People can go to Warrenton's shop. They can go to Culpeper's shop. They can go to Propp Royal. You can still live here, and you can still have families here. And it's not going to create a lot of it. I agree that we need to look into that a little bit better and stop saying, "Can't have these three houses, can't have this, oh, can't have 50 feet." Let's get together on that a little bit. I always thought that we were just going to say, "We got our own little heaven, we don't care about the county." But I have always cared. I've been a volunteer. I've been working on a lot of things for the past 35, 40 years, with the schools, with the county, the food pantry, the PTO, this, that. And I always thought, "That's a county. You volunteered, you belong." But also, you can't just put yourself in a little oasis. But we can protect. I want us to remain rural. I want us to remain, that we have farms, that we are losing right and left. But I also think the village part would keep us from losing farms. Beyond that, my two cents is worth it. Nothing.
Thank you. Nobody else in the courtroom? If not, moving on, we have a few people on Zoom. Anyone on Zoom wishing to speak during public comment? Please raise your Zoom hand. All right, not seeing any hands on Zoom, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment.
I just wanted to take a minute to point out that there's no anticipated action on the agenda tonight in relation to the BZA decision this past week. And I just wanted folks to know that, in case you're wondering, sitting here wondering if we're going to talk about that, it's not on the agenda, and we don't have any intention of adding it or acting on it. I was just letting folks know if they're here in anticipation of a follow-up action or discussion in regards to the BZA decision last week. That is not on the agenda for this evening. So if you're thinking that we're taking that up tonight, we are not.
I think people are still interested in talking about it.
I think that's exactly what's happening. But if I had heard that, I might be anticipating that it is an agenda item, and I'm glad folks are engaged and come out to talk about it. But at the same time, I just wanted to be very clear that we don't have an agenda item in relationship to that matter on the agenda tonight.
Correct. All right, moving along, we will go into the public hearing items. Number one is zoning ordinance amendment, tourist homes, special requirements. And we do have Michelle Summers joining us via Zoom.
Yeah, I'll do the introduction.
Okay.
So Board's aware, and has been discussing with the Planning Commission for a fair amount of time now. There's been a consideration to amend the zoning ordinance so as to add a provision that would require a landowner to own a parcel for two years before they could submit an application, before the zoning administrator would accept an application for a tourist home, which is our legal term for Airbnb-type short-term rental. It's a rather simple addition, as is shown in the ordinance amendment here. The zoning administrator shall not accept a special exception application for tourist homes unless the applicant owner has owned the subject parcel for a period of not less than two years. This matter was before the Planning Commission. The matter was discussed by both Boards jointly at your recent joint meeting. The Planning Commission held a public hearing relative to this, and after hearing from the public, voted six to one to recommend to the Board to adopt this language. The one dissenting vote thought that the holding period should be longer than two years. Has I captured that correctly, Ms. Smith?
I think you did, and I'll be happy to talk about it more when the time comes.
This public hearing's been advertised in accordance with Code of Virginia, Section 15.2, 2204, in the local newspaper for two consecutive weeks, as well as been available for citizen review at my office.
Mr. Curry, if I could just point out, there's language in the summary that at least one of my constituents found confusing. And I want to make sure at the outset that everyone is clear on the intent of the contemplated ordinance change. There's language in there, and you just use the phrase, and again, a holding period. And my constituent interpreted that to mean that an application would be filed, and then you would have to wait two years to get a response. And I explained to them that the intent was to curtail sort of absentee investor ownership of properties for the purpose of Airbnb-type use, and that the two years was a ownership period requirement.
Right, it's a prerequisite. So in clear terms, the zoning administrator shall not accept a special exception application unless the property's been owned by the individual for two years. So the zoning minister is not permitted to accept that application. So it's never on file, it's just not a valid application.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think with that, you're welcome to open the public.
Well, I guess I will speak first, since this was an agenda item that I added originally. And the reason that I added it was because of some of the issues that. And the reason that I added it was because of some of the issues that some folks have brought up tonight, which is that we live in a county that has self-imposed low-density housing. We have kept our, you know, housing ratio compared to the rest of the counties around us very low. And that's an intentional thing that we have done, and we've made that decision. And that comes with costs. And we've heard some people talk about that tonight. I absolutely value the tourists and the tourist dollars that come through this county. And I think that Airbnbs and short-term rentals provide a much-needed source of revenue. And they help our county to thrive, and they help to create business where otherwise it might not be. At the same time, I wanted to do something that would hopefully put a little bit of a chilling effect on the ability for people to just kind of come in, snatch up a house, throw it on the market, and then maybe come out here a couple times a weekend, or a year. And I think through COVID, we saw, and it spiked, a lot of that happening. It was not my intention to say we don't want tourist homes. And we have active, I think, 72 currently in this county. We're a county of 7,300 people, we have 72 active tourist homes. There are more that are not active, but we've got a robust amount of them. So anyway, a long way of saying that I thought that maybe having this period would just put a little bit of a cooling effect on people just wanting to snatch up houses. And maybe what it would do, actually, is if somebody really wanted this home, maybe they would buy it and then provide a rental for two years before that they would maybe want to go for a permit. So that was kind of the background. I mean, I grew up here, and I was lucky enough to buy a tiny house in Woodville, and not too far from where I grew up. And, you know, my brothers and I had a hard time finding houses to buy. It's tough, and I know that. And I do not want to continue ignoring what I don't think we can necessarily fix, because I think it's a national issue. But I want to try. So it's a small way of saying, hey, we're not killing it, but, you know, this two years might help to just cool it out a little bit. So that's why I had it originally on there. Other than that, I have heard back from some folks, and I know that we'll have a discussion here, but I do think that, I don't think I've ever had a constituent come up to me and say, you know what we need more of? Airbnbs.
Right.
But I've had a lot come up to me and say, what are we going to do about this? So I just want the folks out there to know that I'm not against tourism. I mean, I own a business in Rappahannock that thrives on tourism. So this was an effort to just help the local folks.
Ms. Smith, did you want to say anything before we go into the public hearing?
I would just say that, I don't know if you all had occasion to watch the planning commission meeting in regards to this particular agenda item. I do think that the vote at the end of the day was maybe, it's a snapshot in time, but it did not capture all of the diversity of opinion on this.
Yeah.
And I would say that there was also a robust undercurrent of concern that this did undermine property owners' rights. I can't think of any other occasion or business except for maybe ADUs, family apartments, where we ask something not to happen for a period of time. It's very rare in our ordinance, and we certainly don't do it with restaurants, or farms, or any number of things that folks can do with their properties. And when I take a micro dive into the listing of properties that have approved tourist homes, like we did at the planning commission, it's very apparent that this cuts both ways. Eldon Farm, case in point, because this was, I think, before any of y'all were on the board, but that was approved before the sale of that property to the Okrees. And they were looking for ways to build value into the property, or for doing something that then the new owner perhaps can't avail themselves of for two years. We're taking value out of that property that the owners are trying to build in order to have a successful sale. And I don't like to put everybody on the spot, but the other instance of this was the sale of the neighboring property to the Jenkins Orchard down on Yancee. And they were able to buy a neighboring farm and include it in their agricultural operation and use the housing on the farm for a short-term rental. And that enabled them to keep that property in agriculture. And we've had another instance of that in the last week. And I just, my eyes are really open that this cuts both ways, and that we may think we are doing a good thing, but we may not be able to anticipate what the future holds.
Right. Everyone else is good, we're going to go right into the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, same rules, come up, give us your name and your district. Yes.
Good evening. Dick Deek is Stonewall District. Ms. Smith echoes my thoughts entirely, and that you brought it up. I'm a property rights person. We have enough restrictions on our land as it is right now. We volunteered to give up some of our property rights to have a good, comprehensive plan and a zoning plan. I believe if you're within the framework of the law, you should probably be able to do anything you want with your land. And this adds another restriction to this, and in some cases deprives some people from earning an income from their property that may not be able to afford. So I'm in opposition to this language. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Alyssa Carton, Piedmont District. Reached out to all of you earlier last week to let you know about my personal situation and was encouraged to share that story. Very excited to be here with my husband, Gary. We have lived in Virginia for 29 years. I've worked at George Mason University for 28 years, where I'd like to think very engaged in our community and look forward to being engaged here. We have a kind of a sad story, but it's ending nicely, I think. Maybe some of you were able to meet Lori Bean. She purchased the Price home that the Prices built and lived in, in Sperryville, on Rolling Road in the summer of July 2022, after her longtime husband of 30 years passed away from MS. She was really, really excited to be out here and be where her and Bill just love to be in nature. Lori and Bill were a huge part of our community. They were the adoptive grandparents of all the kids in our neighborhood, including my sons. And they didn't, they don't have much extended family. So Lori purchased the Price house in July of 2022, and last spring, out of nowhere, found out she had cancer and passed away this past July. Everyone in the neighborhood is still devastated. It's been really hard. We've been friends and family, which is what we are in our neighborhood. We're trying to figure out a way to keep the home out here, and we did what we could to try and figure out to make it happen. Part of us being able to figure out how to make it happen was considering that we would be able to do some short-term rentals when we weren't able to be here ourselves. We're so excited to drive 65 miles and be here on the weekends and our vacations. Our two adult sons just settled in Virginia. We know they're not going anywhere. We're going to be retiring, hopefully, sooner than later. And that's our goal, is to move out here, be a part of the community. Volunteer Gary's already being recruited by the Foothills Forum, Steve Vix, nonprofit as a writer. So we just wanted to share our story and hope to fulfill Lori's dream of being able to bring all her adopted grandchildren out to enjoy this amazing place. And I don't envy you your job. Thank you for what you do. It's really important. I know it's really hard. It probably oftentimes feels like there's, it's hard to make everyone happy, I know that, but I just want to share our story. Thank you.
Thank you.
We thought everyone was happy.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Ron McCall, Jackson District. Having been on the BZA and looking, basically, I went over the list that you included here of all of the permits from 32118. And basically, I was involved in all of those. And so I'm familiar with all of the properties. And I understand the concern of people coming in from the outside and, you know, looking at buying up houses on a business basis for short-term rentals. And looking at the list, there are, I could find five that perhaps fit in that category. And the rest of them are all family situations or whatever, that it's a second home, we're not there all the time, we'd like, you know, we'd like to be able to rent it out, helps pay for, you know, the cost of keeping up the home, taxes and whatever. And at the same time, they're providing housing for tourists. And we've got to think about that. That's, you know, as I just said, you can't get breakfast here, but we still want people to come here. And so we need, we don't, we don't have motels. And, you know, the only thing we've got to offer people to come stay in Rappahannock, for the most part, is the inn and a couple of BnBs and tourist homes. So we really need to be aware of that. And there are a lot of people that will be, I mean, one of the things that concerns me is the transfer situation, is that if someone has a permit for a tourist home or whatever, and on the recent ones, we say in the permit that they are not transferable on the sale of the property. But for the people that are selling it, they can say, we've got the permit, and they may have built up clientele or whatever, and that, you know, you can go to the county and get that permit. And in fact, it can be a condition on a real estate contract, and that if we can get, you know, the contract or the permit for the thing, we'll buy the property. So it's something that I don't see, it's not going to be anything that will solve our affordable housing problem. But on the other hand, I think it's something that really will or can affect our tourism appeal. So you put the two together, and I think we really need to look at the tourist end of it. And like I said, I don't see, we don't, we're lucky, because you've read the stories about in other areas, there can be problems with tourist homes or short-term rentals. We have not experienced that. The people that are managing our facilities, the families, whatever, they do what they're supposed to do. So it's not causing a problem. So let's not mess with it. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Margaret Bond, Piedmont District. I really appreciate all the comments that have, we've heard tonight, and those that were expressed during the planning commission discussion of the same topic. At that planning, earlier planning commission meeting, I did voice my support for this particular amendment to the zoning ordinances. It had been something I was thinking about even before the proposed change came about in the last three years, where we live, on either side of us, property transferred and one became an investor-type property, where it was instantly an Airbnb. And the other side of us, a owner became, was a weekender. And I said to my husband at that time, I said, are we becoming a county of transients? Where you have an increasing trend of transient populations, whether they come out for the weekend, or they only come out once every six months because their property is being used for an Airbnb? And I didn't know the answer to that. I just said, there's a value to the permanent residents that invest in the community, that volunteer their services, that make possible the amenities of the county that the tourists like to come down and see. But if you allow that permanent resident population to diminish to a point where you only have, or a too high a percentage of, I call them transients, it's probably not a very nice term, but it seems to me that's what they are. You don't have, then, the quality of life that we have invested in and is part of what's captured in our comprehensive plan. I looked at the statistics, too, that Mr. Curry labored to put together for us, and it didn't really jump out at me one way or the other where we are going with this. I do know that during the period of the COVID lockdown, that there was an awful lot of interest in this property for investors to have weekend homes. And I would guess that a lot of the effect of the purchase of properties by weekenders and by investors drove up the property prices. We don't know what will happen in the future, as we've talked about, and there's pros and cons. If interest rates go down, will there be another influx of investors and so forth? But the point for a short-term moratorium on the use of property purchased here has a value to the county in that it gives a chance, as the previous speaker said, for a breathing space, where the county can really look at the trends. And I'm thinking of trends more than the snapshot in time of where we are right now. And that's harder to be able to assess. We all have our opinions, and we all have our viewpoints right now, but we haven't really, I haven't, been able to get my head around the whole idea, what's going to happen into the future? And how will the skewing of population in terms of non-resident owners versus residents who invest in the community affect the long-term use and enjoyment of everyone's property? So I'm in favor of this two-year moratorium with the encouragement to the board of supervisors that the trends and the projections and what we can do to consider the effects of this moratorium be explored during this time period, so that when the question comes back at the end of two years, well, do we still want this? Is it working? Does it have the desired effect? Are we discouraging tourists? Are we, is the tourist population stayed the same? Things we don't have answers to today. And in keeping with my personal philosophy, if you've suggested something, somebody do something about an issue, like study it or do some work in research on it, that I better be willing to volunteer to be part of that effort. So if the board of supervisors does want to use this time of two-year hiatus in accepting special exception permits and study, that I would be glad to volunteer my support for such an effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
Piedmont, I had absolutely zero intention of talking about this issue.
It's so much fun.
Yeah, so much. But I think, like, as you said, Ms. Smith, I think, and I'm sympathetic with the idea, I'm just trying to figure out in my head how this works in practice. So you have, I work on a farm, they have a couple of houses there, they're absentee owner, I mean, I say absentee, they come out a couple times a month, they Airbnb, then there's a smaller kind of, let's call it a tenant house. They choose to Airbnb at short-term rental, weekend rentals versus, you know, let's say, long-term rental. But on the other hand, they have the right to say, if we want to come out on a weekend, then we don't rent that place, because this is our property, we want to come here and spend the weekend, bring our friends, whatever. So that's one point. It's kind of the freedom of choice, if you want to call it that. The second point is. The second point is, I'm not clear what a two-year moratorium accomplishes. So I raise that as an open question to you as sponsoring it. What would it accomplish in terms of two years, one year? If I'm also, let's say, an investor, and I buy a small house, why can't I just choose? I mean, frankly, I'd rather have the monthly, if it's not a place I'm going to come visit, it's just as an investment, then I'd rather have a yearly tenant, an annual tenant, you know, this kind of thing, that somebody's paying me monthly income, not just some weekends, not other weekends, kind of a crapshoot type of thing. So as I said, I wasn't going to speak about this, I'm agnostic, I just would rather, you know, rather hear what is going to be accomplished with a two-year moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you.
Edward Hughes from the Wakefield District. I come to speak against the recommendation. I, I'm not sure that the problem that it's designed to solve is clearly defined, but let me talk about some of the problems that it does solve. Many homebuyers that plan now or eventually to reside in the county full-time start off by looking for supplemental incomes through short-term rentals. And I would think we'd want to attract those people. They have, in their own minds at least, decided to make this county part of their lives, and they'll become full-fledged contributors to the community at some point. The idea that there's a flood of investors out there that want to come in and buy property for Airbnb doesn't understand how Airbnb works, Airbnb works. I mean, Airbnb actually puts some fairly onerous obligations on the homeowner, and occupancy rates are minimal. They're not the type of investment that real estate developers are looking for. So I think that that's a kind of a chimera that we're afraid of. But more importantly, it allows new people to come in and buy houses that we would want to help build the community for the affordability aspect of it. It certainly will generate more revenue for the county by attracting more people, both for tourism and for people that come out here on weekends, even if that's all they do. I just think that it's attractive. I mean, it should be desirable for us to want to attract new people that want to put money behind what they do in the county. It seems to me that that's a very logical step to take, and I'm puzzled by why there's such opposition to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll echo the previous comments, which I hadn't planned to say anything but. I know there are some yin yang here. Just a couple thoughts. It was said before at the Planning Commission that two years really isn't a very long time. If someone is really intent on trying to come to Rappahannock and stay here, they'll find a way to make it work. And that may mean that they make a little less money, because the Airbnb rates, I have friends who do that, and I am shocked at what they get per night. But besides that, it means that instead of them doing that, maybe they rent to someone for two years for longer term. And this isn't necessarily applicable here, but I'll just mention, I had family who lived in the Virgin Islands for 15 years, and that is a high tourist area, particularly in the winter, but the majority of their tourism comes November, December, January. And there were people who would rent homes to locals there, provided that they get out November, December, January, which left these people, a lot of times, living on someone's boat or, you know, literally under a tarp in someone's yard, because it's the tropics, you know? Because they had, that part of them being able to secure a place on land was this, you know, this condition that they get out during the high tourist season. So I understand that there isn't a perfect scenario here, but as was pointed out, I think it bears merit to collect some data and see. I've sat through plenty of hearings, as you guys have, where there are issues with applications, with people who are, you know, doing Airbnb without getting a permit, with problems with neighbors. I'm sure some work right, but there's been enough issues now, and that's why I think Mr. Carney proposed this. The other thing I'll just say is, please be mindful, you guys are, but I just want to put it on the record, there is a national affordable housing problem. We are not going to solve affordable housing by a moratorium on an Airbnb or, you know, opening up our right-of-way ordinances, again, please don't. That's not what's going to happen, because if we build a bunch of houses, the cost for that is not going to be affordable, it's just not. So that is not a solution, and I think anybody who thinks it is either is misinformed or they're misleading intentionally. So, yeah, I don't know. I think it's worth trying, two years, it's not a long time, let's see what happens, gather the data, and go from there.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Mark.
I learned about 35 years ago that disagreement with Margaret Bond usually leads to unpleasant consequences. But a couple of points have been raised that seem to me that need to be addressed before you pass this ordinance. It's unfortunate, because the ordinance is elegant, it's simple, it's easy to understand, but it's, in my view, it's not a moratorium, because there's no sunset date, there's no end date to it, as I understand it. The county attorney will correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sure. But everybody that, each person that buys a property has to wait two years before they can get an Airbnb or a tourist home permit application filed, and that two years continues on into the future with no cutoff time, no cutoff date. And then the other problem that was raised by one of the speakers was, if you have an affiliated people situation or a family situation, you may impose a two-year waiting period on them as well, which may not have been the intent of the ordinance. So I hate to even ask you if you would like to rework the ordinance a little bit to try to address these problems before you pass it, but I will. And I don't know how, who's going to do this two-year study and feasibility and keep all the statistics and all that. That sounds like if you had a planning department and somebody could detail to do that, great, but it's kind of, going to be kind of haphazard, I think, depending on what goes in front of the Planning Commission and what other situations arise. So good luck with this.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was Mark Anderson, Piedmont District. I got you, Mark.
My name is Monica Worth, Piedmont District. I'm getting confused. I didn't hear in what you suggested, or what was on the screen, that we were planning a two-year moratorium at all. We were simply saying, if you buy a home here, you have to wait two years before you can apply, and you still have to go through an application for your tourist use of your home, for that sort of tourist use of your home. I think it would be great if there was a steady period, but I didn't hear anybody saying from that that there was, that was built into that, to the plan that you were talking about tonight. And what I heard instead was, as time goes on, you keep an eye on things and you revise it if you need to going forward. What I have heard from a few friends who have Airbnb rights right now, or Airbnb permits right now, is that the market is completely saturated right now, and people are starting to not be able to rent. And I think there's a property for sale in Sperryville that had intended to be rented in several chunks, and it just didn't happen. And I believe it's for sale for that reason, although I don't know that for certain. I do think that there is, perhaps not for big developers, but for individual speculators, I think there is value in buying something and turning it right over into something like a tourist home or an Airbnb, I'm sorry, I don't want to use the word tourist home, turning it into an Airbnb immediately. And I think there are people who are not exactly professional developers who would find that very attractive. At the same time, I don't see that, with the exception of your story, where there's a good reason for what's going on, I do see that a two-year period is not so cumbersome that you could make no income off the property, it could be rented, or that the property would be somehow, there would be any problem going in with full transparency on that. So if someone is really wanting to come to Rappahannock County too, and has wanted to be here for a long time, or plans to be here in the future, there is a way to monetize that property for those two years, and to perhaps make a better investment by seeing where the market is yourself by the end of that two-year period. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Catherine Ishay, Piedmont. I'm not speaking so much on my own behalf tonight, because I don't have a strong opinion on this. It sounds like a good idea to me, partly because I know other jurisdictions down by Richmond had run into problems with tourist homes and had put forth something, a similar provision to kind of help rein it in a little bit, so they could get a handle on it. I, for my own part, I do know that I have friends out in the county here, and a large home on top of a mountain was turned, was sold and turned into an Airbnb very quickly, and they've had huge amounts of problems with, it was an illegal Airbnb for a long time, so it's probably not on your list, it may be by now, but huge problems with people coming in, partying, tearing up the road, it was a community-owned road, so they have to improve it themselves, but the people who are renting the Airbnb weren't kicking in. I've heard other problems from other friends in other areas where, you know, loud parting is going on next door and they can't do anything about it, because it's, there are people who are leaving, they don't have any investment in the county. So I don't think that's a huge problem in general in our county, but it always has struck me as a little odd, the Airbnb phenomena, because on the one hand, we've had forever zoning that puts hotels and motels in one specific district, but Airbnbs have become so prolific, it's almost as if we've forgotten about the zoning for hotels and motels, instead it's everywhere. And so the very reasons that you had put hotels and motels in one district because of traffic or noise or whatever, has kind of bled community-wide. So it doesn't strike me that two years is a terribly onerous period. Again, you don't lose income if you rent it out to a family who needs a place to live for two years. I understand, you know, people who move to the county could make income quickly, but it seems like a pretty reasonable balance to me on the whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing anyone else in the courtroom. Anyone on Zoom wishing to speak with regards to this one particular public hearing item? Please raise your Zoom hand. Not seeing any hands, we'll close the public hearing and open it up to the board for discussion.
I just want to get ahead of the word moratorium, because we are, in fact, the Dillon Rule State, and we, it is not one of the things that is, one of the powers bestowed upon the county to impose a moratorium. So just to be clear, we are not suggesting a moratorium, because we would be precluded by doing so, to do so.
Yeah, and the other thing I'd like to say is that having an Airbnb for the law, getting a permit, for the most part, in Rappahannock County, is not a by-right use of anybody's property. There are a few small zones where you can do it by right. So this is a process where people pay $800 and have to go through and have to check all the boxes of being able to satisfy this piece of legislation right here to even get there. This is not a moratorium. What this does is it says to somebody that wants to immediately do an Airbnb, you've got to wait, not a whole long time, but two years. I can see how this could have a downside to Realtors. We've had robust conversations about this, I know the Planning Commission has, we had a joint commission with the Planning Committee, we had a joint meeting with the Planning Commission where we touched on some things that Mr. Mackler brought up about the transfer of homes and how that gets complicated, and we've gone over that. Airbnb was something that people did not predict in 1986 when we put our zoning in. This does not line up with our zoning. This is almost like ersatz spot zoning. We are taking agricultural properties and turning them into commercial properties where the owners do not even have to be there, ever. And then in two years, they can be transferred over into LLCs. This just happens all the time, and I think it's, I think it's okay and sometimes it's appropriate. But is this what we want for our zoning? Is this what we want to do with our ag land? I mean, this is just a big conversation. So my initial idea was, somebody can still buy a house, they can still apply and get an Airbnb permit, but you just have to wait two years. By that time, you can rent it out, you can generate income, there's lots of by-right uses for ag land, including farming, but this is not a by-right use in this county. And if we want to have that discussion, well, that's a totally different discussion. Airbnb has changed a lot of communities very quickly, very quickly. Anyway, having grown up here, having seen my peers that I went to elementary school with, and still not being able to buy a house, it's something that weighs heavy on me. And I know that this is not a silver bullet for anything, and I know it cuts both ways. I really do get that. But I think that there's so many intersections of what's going on here, I just think if we could just pump the brakes a little bit, it would help. It's my two cents.
So I just want to say, I struggle with this one a little bit, too, because of property rights and because of the importance of tourism. I think we're in a unique position here in Rappahannock County because of those two things. I do agree with some of my colleagues and some of the speakers, two years, when you sit back and think about it, we're not saying you can't do what you'd like to do with your property, we're just asking you to wait two years before you do so. I do wonder, though, if we can, if there is any way to give people a little bit of time, give people a little bit of notice on this, if we were to adopt this. I would hate, you know, for those people who have things in the works, maybe some plans, I would hate to, you know, pull the rug out from under them so quickly.
So like an effective, a future effective date? Perspective effective date?
Yes, yes.
Or maybe just some descriptive language that... Yeah, I'm sensitive to the fact that folks could have purchased, you know, a house three months ago, getting prepared to do this. So we could do that?
Yeah, you have in the past had a delayed enactment date, and I think ultimately, the preamble of the Ordinance Amendment, where now therefore it is ordained and enacted by rule called vote of Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors this fourth day of March 2024, that zoning, yada, 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 be changed effective, whatever.
Okay, we can, all right, that'd be perfect. So that's the preamble? Do you want to go?
I would just say, I mean, I hear people asking us to do a study. We have a list of properties from the last several years dating back to 2017 that applied for these special exception permits. So we have a body of data to choose to base our decision on. And I think it's a good representation of the many different situations that we may find ourselves facing as a board. And as I look through the list of those properties and how we disposed of those applications, I feel like we made good choices, and I don't feel like it's necessary for us to make different choices. choices. And I think also of that gentleman whose name escapes me down in Rappahannock Lakes, and that was not an ideal location for that tourist home for any number of reasons. However, that's the perfect example of a young man who bought a property and faced some adversity unexpectedly and, you know, needed to do something with his property. And so what if we have someone who finds themselves faced with a situation that they couldn't anticipate and their best remedy is to Airbnb it? I also think of my peer, Chris Parish, who, like myself, was no lover of tourist homes. But at the end of the day, if there's an older person or somebody in the community that's struggling to make ends meet, renting a room on a temporary basis may be an opportunity for them to have some extra income that they would ordinarily not be able to have. And to me, it does come down to the end of the day that there's a large volume of data for us to look at, and I'm very comfortable with the decisions that we've made. I don't feel like we need to put a pause on things. I think if anything, this if it does anything, if people should choose to rent long term instead of rent short term, maybe we can use the carrot and not the stick to accomplish that and just ask the community to consider where we're headed. Because I would much rather have neighbors and not tourists in my neighborhood too. But we derive a lot of revenue from tourism and these folks need someplace to stay. Again, I would just say I look at what we've done and I think it's more than sufficient process for these properties. We're talking about two or three properties maybe per year. But are they affordable? Would someone would someone buy them that would that would live there full time? That's not for me to say. But I feel confident that we've handled these these applications the right way in the past and that we can do so in the future without this two-year holding period.
Sorry, we've got. Go ahead, Mr. Woodson.
I definitely fall into the I'm no fan of Airbnb camp for sure, and that's that's kind of been my position for a long time. So when Mr. Carney introduced this initiative that would require two-year ownership, I obviously thought it was a pretty thoughtful and incremental change to our ordinance that might might have the effect of perhaps so small of an effect that we would not even be able to notice it, but it could have an effect on the affordable housing market. And while I was listening to everyone's comments, it reminded me that back in, I think it was 2016 or 17, somewhere in that timeframe predating me. The most important provision on tourist homes is 17066K, which includes minimum acreage requirements for zoned egg and conservation properties. And people might have now forgotten that that provision used to read in A and C zones, the minimum requirement for tourist homes shall be two acres and five acres respectively. And for reasons we don't need to go into here, that two and five acre minimum acreage provision was changed and replaced with the pre-existing language of 10 and 20 acres respectively for egg and conservation zones. And at that time, I thought that that change, putting the minimum acreage at a higher level would, at least in theory, at least in theory, keep the relatively rare smaller properties that are zoned egg and conservation, and I live on one of them, sort of out of the short-term rental market. And so what follows there is potential incremental improvement in housing stocks for long-term rentals by virtue of the minimum acreage change. So back then, I thought that that change was a step in the right direction, and I don't think any of us can sit here five, six, seven years later and know whether that change has really had an effect on our overall housing market, but we all continue to hear about the need for affordable housing. Back then, when the minimum acreage was two and five acres respectively, real estate agents would advertise properties that said for sale, perfect short-term rental, perfect for Airbnb, homeway.com, et cetera. And when I saw those ads at the time, I was quite startled because that goes to exactly the point that I think Mr. Carney has thoughtfully tried to address with this ordinance amendment. The last thing I want to say is that when Ms. Bond was speaking earlier, she used the word investment in a couple of different ways, and it reminded me of something. I just want to quickly read this if you would indulge me. It's only four paragraphs, I think. And Mr. Deakins will remember this. And late last year, a couple who lives overseas completed renovations on a small dilapidated cabin they purchased up the road from me in Harris Hollow. Initially, my neighbors and I were happy to see a rapidly deteriorating home turned into an attractive, livable weekend getaway for the owners. Soon after completing the renovation work, however, the property owners petitioned the county for a permit to lease their cabin as a tourist home to weekend and other short-term renters. One longtime Harris Hollow resident spoke plainly but eloquently when he told the county's planning commission that quote, he didn't want to have a different neighbor every weekend. The Board of Zoning Appeals ultimately rejected the application, concluding that the county is not obligated to quote unquote reward tourist home applicants just because they have purchased and invested in Rappahannock County real estate. As one BZA member summed it up at the time, quote, "You decided to spend money to buy and renovate your property, but that doesn't necessarily we the county owe you anything." Recently, another tourist home application for a property in Chester Gap came before the BZA. Neighbors expressed concern that an unattended weekend rental property on their narrow rural road could undermine their safety and quality of life. Tourist home proposals from absentee investors like those in Harris Hollow and Chester Gap are only going to increase in number as more property owners look to websites like Airbnb.com, homeway.com, and VRBO to monetize their real estate investments. Lobbyists in Richmond working on behalf of Airbnb and other similar companies are pushing for changes to the laws that govern the administration and enforcement of local ordinances. If made, these changes would deem moot the work that the Board of Supervisors, the Planning Commission, and the BZA do to control who operates what in this county, including the location of tourist homes. Put simply, this threat to our way of life is no different than the threat of unfettered development that led thoughtful citizens and local government leaders to impose in the 1980s, the restrictive zoning rules meant to retain the county's rural and scenic nature. Our zoning ordinances have helped make this county unique among any of the places I've ever lived or visited, and with just over 7,000 residents, we generally know our neighbors. And in the spirit of being a good neighbor, I do not oppose the basic right of the Harris Hollow and Chester Gap applicants to own property or to live in our beautiful county. What I do oppose are absentee real estate owners who pose a fundamental challenge to the way we all live as they try to cash in on their investments through short-term rentals. We are walking on a slippery slope. I challenge the Board of Supervisors and the county administrator to fight the effort in Richmond to strip us of our rights and authority to protect our county and way of life. And I also challenge the supervisors and administrator to set guidelines for tourist homes that mirror the intent of the county's comprehensive plan. Without an action plan, we risk losing the fundamental character of our county, including losing neighbors who have lived here a lot longer than me. Soon, this small community in which we have all invested in the true sense of the word may not be the same community that we bought into in the first place. And oddly, I wrote that letter to the editor in 2016. So if anyone believes that, you know, Van talked me into supporting his amendment, I staked out my position seven years ago, and I continue to represent many rural residents, not so much in the town of Washington, where of course the rules are different and there are many tourist homes in this village area, but rather out in the remote hollows of the Hampton District, I continue to hear feedback that plays into this position. And I agree with Mr. Deakins and others who do raise a property right question as a legitimate one, and that definitely gives me pause in this context because that too is a slippery slope. But nevertheless, I've always been suspicious of where this whole short-term rental idea would lead. And we know seven years ago, we didn't know there would be a pandemic and we didn't know the effect that would have on property ownership and why people purchase properties in rural areas. So in some way, when Ms. Bond used this word investment, it led me back to thinking this through at the time. And it's definitely a delicate issue, but I think on balance, like the two and five acre change to 10 and 20 acre minimum, what Mr. Carney has proposed, if nothing else, is just an incremental step that might maybe we'll never know it, but might help keep some properties for long-term residents. And I think that it's fair to say that any ordinance can be undone at any time. And so if we see unintended consequences that we're not anticipating right now, then certainly it should be revisited. Thank you.
I totally agree with having the right to do what you would like to do with your property. In this situation, I believe Airbnb processes, if you go through the process, probably takes a good three months anyway. So this isn't a two-year pause. This is maybe, you know, 15 month or something like that. But I happen to know because of being in Loray every now and then with the Ed Foundation for Laurel Ridge, that there were townhomes built right behind the Walmart in front of where the brand-new campus is. And I looked out of the conference room and I went, that's great. These townhomes are perfect for the teachers. And then I find out that out of the 15, I think there were five that had been purchased specifically by people that lived in DC to use for Airbnb and tourist homes. Not the most attractive place for an Airbnb, but so close to the mountains and, you know, the adventure of the mountains. And that's definitely, well, I'm not worried about townhomes so much in Rappahannock County, but it's easy to see how someone that has the money or a group of people that has the money to invest in multiple locations could easily do that and then have them rented and maybe managed by people, someone living in the county, but so far away should anything happen. The one thing I learned in the restaurant world was you tend to pay attention, the independent restaurateurs paid attention to the chain restaurants because the chains figured out things way before the independent restaurateur. So if the chain was chain groups were doing something specific about meals or to-go food or to-go drinks, whatever, you knew it was coming. And I think that's really the message when you brought it up in the beginning, we were hearing from Richmond. They were trying to decide how they could control this situation in a much larger area. And to me, when you know things are happening around you and you've got the citizens asking you to keep Rappahannock, Rappahannock, don't allow fast growth, let's make sure we're community working together and supporting each other and investing in the community by nonprofits or however you choose to volunteer your time. That's where I think having a two-year wait to make sure that this is the community you want to be in or own property in or come out to when you find out that we don't have necessarily trash removal, a pharmacy, the closest restaurant is wherever, the closest hospital. Breakfast. We don't have breakfast.
Well, there's lots of breakfast. You just have to know where it is.
I thought the black twig had breakfast, but I didn't guess.
They stop that. It's just on the weekends.
Okay, all right. But anyway, that's I believe this is a very, you know, it's one of those conversations that you're not going to make everybody happy. It's just impossible. But I believe we've been asked to try to make sure that we do put in some rules that will help us stay who we have been for a very long time. And, you know, I think this is a option that we have, and we've been talking about this for a very long time, and I haven't heard another suggestion or another idea that has been better, that the Planning Commission has heard, that we have heard, that the people have heard.
I think still the best solution to me would be what we hear from people when these applications come up. We've heard that many times as a board and as a planning commission, is that mandate that there's either onsite management or someone on a neighboring property? That's the real concern is that there's no supervision and the planning and the zoning administrator is off on the weekends and it's a lot of remote areas in the county. That's the main concern to me is that these places are so unsupervised that that's a legitimate concern. But just who owns it doesn't make any difference. How long they've owned it, they can be just as good a neighbor.
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, you're right that nuisance Airbnbs creep up from time to time, and I think generally the system works. People complain, it filters back, or somebody has one that's unlicensed, which means we're not collecting the very minimal tax revenue that we otherwise would. The tax revenue generated from Airbnbs in the county, I think we've talked about that many, many times. It's it's not de minimis, but it's relatively, well, I would say, very modest. But I think if I should let Mr. Carney speak for himself, but I view his proposed ordinance change as less operational and day-to-day monitoring in nature and something more macro, again, similar to the minimum acreage change, which is really just to sort of protect, I think he phrased it well, protect our agricultural property and protect our properties from outside absentee investment to the extent possible. But I also see the the property rights question that's been raised as valid. But I don't I don't see this proposed amendment to the ordinance as something that could be accomplished through day-to-day monitoring and oversight. It's very different.
And I do agree with you about the oversight. I don't know how to address it, and we talked about it in the Planning Commission meeting, the joint meeting we had. I think that that's very difficult to do. And I want to echo the same concerns that you all have brought up about property rights. I highly respect property rights. And you know what we haven't done as a community? We haven't sat down and said, hey, do we want to turn our ag land into commercial land? We haven't done that, and yet we're doing it constantly. We're doing it constantly, permit by permit. If we want to do that, and if in 30, 40 years, we want to just have lots of Airbnbs with very low density, we have one house per 25 acres on tracts that are, anyway, it's a one per 25 acre requirement. And if we want to have that discussion, that's a separate discussion. So this is a condition amongst many conditions on something that's just that's permitted use. Anyway, I think that we've had a lot of really good discussions about this, and I think that we'll continue to discuss it in a really good way. But I just I felt like I needed to address these issues that so many people that I have grown up with have come to me and asked me to do. And I would feel remiss if I did not do that. And I know that there's a lot of folks in this county that would like to see us. that would like to see us. They look at a ten-acre field, and they don't think it's fair that they shouldn't be able to build a house in it, and they grew up here, and their grandparents grew up here. And I truly get that. I have no answer for that. I really don't. But what I do think that we can do in the short term is go step by step. And this is, this is, this is my suggestion. But so to move things along, I'll just make a motion. We'll see how it plays out, to move to adopt the provided ordinance amending RCC one seventy dash sixty-six. Okay, with an effective date for, should we do July one? Is that in the fiscal year?
Start of fiscal year.
Start of fiscal year, July one, twenty twenty-four. Is that the start of fiscal year, July one?
Yeah.
Yeah. July one, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, so the, yeah. Whereas the Board of Supervisors having conducted said public hearing on March fourth, as advertised and having considered recognition of the Planning Commission in finding that public necessity, convenience, general welfare, goods zoning practice are part of the proposed amendments, dot, dot, dot.
That magic language?
That's the magic language.
Yeah.
And I'll I'll second the motion with the additional preamble language. And just, I'm not sure if we could discuss. I just had a question.
We're at discussion, yeah.
Okay. Mike, I just want to make sure that the placement of an effective date in a preamble of an ordinance amendment that's already been advertised would not cross the line into.
What happened to shea?
What?
Your laugh is better than mine.
The advertisement kind of fairly put everybody on notice what was going to be.
Okay.
Happening.
So an effective date doesn't take us too far off of what was advertised.
Well, because there was no effective date in the advertisement.
Okay.
Would have been a media, yeah, it could have been today.
Okay, so it's less, right, it's less adverse to anyone who might have been interested in that time.
Okay.
You have a motion, a second. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Comer?
I'm gonna vote aye, but I'm gonna do so stating Ms. Smith is absolutely right. The Planning Commission has gotten this right every single time. And I am gonna watch this. I am gonna watch this.
Mr. Carney?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
And aye also. We'll see what it does for, keep an eye on it.
So in in practicality now, when someone brings in, starting July first, an application to the zoning administrator, and they've owned a property for less than two years, what will happen?
Hand it back to them.
So we won't have a way to track it?
Well, we can, we can, we can note if you'd like.
We'll track those that, those applications that land that are not accepted. I think the ones that would be difficult to track are people who would know about what the ordinance requires and then not submit an application.
That's true.
Yeah, but the ones that affirmatively are submitted and sent back, I mean, will it be, whether or not that's useful, indicative information, I don't know.
I just want to make sure if we're talking about studying information that we're devising ways to capture that information.
We'll be able to, we'll be able to poll our zoning office to find out how many were turned down at a minimum, and then maybe we can think creatively about
How to.
How to, how to track some of the other subset, yeah.
That's good. Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. We are moving into public hearing, zoning ordinance amendment, family divisions one seventy dash forty.
Right, your next public hearing for tonight having to do with zoning ordinance, as you noted, is related to the family division section one seventy dash forty. This section, this entire section is repeated in the subdivision ordinance as well. That conflict led to issues when only one was amended back in two thousand. The Board of Supervisors reviewed this with the Planning Commission when they met, and the recommendation was to modify, wrong attachment, modify the zoning ordinance to remove all of the specific language and rather just add to the short sentence that was, that led that in one seventy dash forty. It used to read, "A family transfer is also exempted from the density limitations contained in one seventy thirty-seven, provided that." And now it says, "A family transfer is exempted from the density limitations contained in one seventy thirty-seven, provided that it meets the requirements of one forty-seven thirty-six." One forty-seven thirty-six is the parallel provisions in the subdivision ordinance. So rather than saying this two times, once in the zoning ordinance, once in the subdivision ordinance, we will only have all of these requirements in the subdivision ordinance. That in a nutshell is what this does. Was advertised pursuant to Code of Virginia, section fifteen-two, twenty-two oh four. And the Planning Commission, at their public hearing on February twenty-one, heard from the public and ultimately adopted to recommend the ordinance amendment by a vote of seven to zero.
Any discussion before we go into the public hearing? Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing for zoning ordinance amendment, family divisions one seventy dash forty. Anyone wishing to speak regarding this, please come up or be recognized. Come up and give us your name and your district. Not as exciting, I guess. All right, I am not seeing any hands in the courtroom. Anyone on Zoom wishing to speak during this public hearing, please raise your Zoom hand. All right, not seeing any Zoom hands. We're gonna go ahead and close public hearing and open it up to the board.
Well, I would, and I could be wrong here, but I would like to thank Mr. Fraser for bringing this up. He is no longer here, but he, I think, mentioned this multiple times since I have been on the board. And he really remembered it and brought it up many, many times, so thank you. I'm gonna make a motion to move to adopt the provided ordinance amending RCC one seventy dash forty.
Have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second it.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
I'm glad to get this piece of housekeeping done.
Absolutely. All those, oops, sorry. Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Comer?
Aye.
Mr. Carney?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
And aye also.
All right, you have one more public hearing tonight. That is, to make a few changes to your code. This is not a zoning matter, and it has not been considered by the Planning Commission. This has to do with open burning. The current county code includes a chapter eighteen that sought to allow the county to prohibit open burning during certain periods of time. Unfortunately, those, that ordinance section had issues because it required a state body to provide advice as to when it was appropriate, and that state body did not provide that advice. So in order to have effective burn bans during exceedingly dry times, you needed to adopt, to rescind the current section and adopt a new section. Well, this section was open. Chapter twenty-one was adopted some time ago by the board to regulate fireworks. The code publisher suggested that that would be better placed in the back half of our ordinance, our county code, in the general legislation section rather than the front where administration is. So what this ordinance amendment does is it gets rid of chapter eighteen, moves what was chapter twenty-one to a new chapter ninety-four, and then adds to chapter ninety-four sections related to open burning. Those sections related to open burning are based on the State Fire Prevention Code and the authorities granted therein. That code provides an opportunity for the board to regulate open burning consistent with the state code, including prohibiting open burning when atmospheric conditions or local circumstances make such fires hazardous. This would bridge the gap that you've had a while, for a while now to not really having the legal enforceability and ultimate ability to have misdemeanors for people who ignore you when you say there's an open burn. It also provides some general restrictions on open burning in the public and requirements for people and how close fires can be to homes and things like that, that ultimately, if you have a fire too close to a home and you burned down your home, you could probably charge them with a misdemeanor, but I imagine they've learned their lesson. If it was a short-term rental person who did it, then you might charge them. So all this is really about allowing the county to really enforce open burning bans when we need to and have the confidence to know that we can take many means to get that word out.
I'm sure people are gonna line up now, you know, maybe five minutes or less per speaker.
May have to.
Gary's description might have had the effect that no one has anything left to say about this.
Yep. But we have to give them an opportunity. All right, this is our last public hearing this evening. Anyone wishing to speak? Please come up, be recognized.
This is in memory of my husband, who was a forester, and his specialty, his interests with a master's degree and worked on a PhD, was on forest fires. And he taught me a lot about them, and they're scary, horrible things. And look what we're seeing in Texas right now. So anyway, I'm glad that this is going to get more in our hands and not somebody else's who doesn't realize how close we are to so much that could.
Yeah.
Catch on fire. So anyway, in his memory, I urge you to pass this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, anyone on Zoom wishing to speak about open burning restriction? Please raise your Zoom hand. Okay, not seeing any hands. I will go ahead and close public comment.
I just, I have one very practical comment about this, which we talked about at the Public Safety Committee and then also at the board. I guess the idea of this ordinance change is, and we we saw we needed to do it during the extended drought when it was clear we were in a really precarious spot and needed to be more nimble in our ability to both impose and then enforce open burning. My concern with this is the ordinance, I guess you would say, now has teeth, but absent some efficient, practical way of notifying the public that a burn ban is in effect, it's somewhat toothless. And so I think we should all continue to think about every possible way that we can efficiently communicate in a very timely manner when these burn bans go into effect. We have, and I know Mr. Mackler came to the Public Safety Committee and and mentioned this point. We don't have, we don't have a daily newspaper. We don't have a public radio station. We do have this app-based E nine-one-one notification system that some people use and many people don't know about. So, you know, we're talking about signs later, so I I should be careful what I wish for here. But, you know, we talked about, you know, at least being able to put up signs on two-eleven and five-twenty-two when something, when a situation arises that for, that requires this ban, and especially when it's a dangerous situation. So whether we lease those on a spot basis doesn't matter, and we don't need to get into those details as part of this, but I just want to say, in my view, we're a rural area with no practical way of communicating these bans to people. And so I feel like, absent that, we're kind of missing the point. That's all.
I really think, well, I saw this last year in Warren County when I went over there, and they had, I think, water, water usage limitations and a burn ban over there. And they had it on their street signs, like right under their speed limits. And I know we talked about the more expensive animated sign, but to me, that was completely cost prohibitive. But I think everyone knows at this table that you can get some pretty nice-looking signs on pickets not too expensively. And maybe we should just get like twenty of those and put them at the entry points into the county.
Maybe.
And at central places and ask the fire rescue companies to put it up on their signs and be done with it. You know, we could probably get twenty or thirty signs for twenty-five dollars and put the county seal on them, make them out of noxious color, and be done with it.
Yeah.
And it's not an elegant solution, but the most important part of it is getting the information out.
Right.
And I don't want to spend, what was it, twenty or thirty thousand dollars for one sign? I want to spend twenty-five dollars and get twenty-five signs.
You can get the little aluminum ones that's reusable.
Yeah, even even the ones that are that corrugated material, they they last a long time. So.
Yeah, whatever the solution, I think we just have to have a standardized approach that when this is triggered, then we do the following.
I think that we should couple that with guidance on the website, and I don't know, maybe somewhere else.
Yeah, we are look, we continue to look at IPAS. And those of you who went to Bay Co. and you crossed into the cell boundary.
Yes.
Of Bath County, your fellows went berserk and told you there was a burn ban.
Yeah.
Our our reverse nine-one-one system should be able to interface with that.
Okay, cool. So let's just make sure that we have a system in place. You know, first thing we do is this. Second thing we do is this. Third thing we do is follow it every time. Because I don't think it's reasonable to then go hit somebody with a fine if they practically speak and had no way of even knowing.
Yeah, and what I had said before, I I didn't feel comfortable pushing out reverse nine-one-one type messages when we really didn't have the authority to tell people they couldn't burn. It was a nice gesture. This changes.
Good.
Yeah.
Good. That's my one comment.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to move to adopt the provided ordinance amending RCC chapters eighteen and twenty-one and creating RCC chapter ninety-four.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
Thank you for doing this.
Yeah, thank you for getting that done.
Good.
All right, I assume this is.
A reminder for everybody right now, don't burn unless it's after four o'clock, right?
Yes.
Correct.
Bonnie was good, got that up on the website right away.
You know, it's really great if people do decide to burn. If you call the non-emergency number at the Sheriff's Department, it can really save them a lot of hassle because then they'll know if someone calls in. People are very conscientious and will call in if they see smoke. And if they have a call to notify them they see smoke. And if they have a call to notify them that someone's burning in the area, it keeps them from having to make a trip.
675-5300.
There you go.
My favorite number.
All right. Ms. Comer.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Carney.
Aye.
Mr. Woodson.
Aye.
And I also. All righty. Are people still here? Gosh.
We're clamor of local government.
Yes. Sign ordinance follow-up.
I think they might be staying for this agenda item.
I think so. You want to kick it off, Ms. Smith?
Uh, yeah. I'd ask Gary to add this back to the agenda, knowing that we hadn't really discussed it in six months. We've put a lot of work into the sign ordinance and love it or hate it, I don't think it's fair to mothball it. And I think we need to talk as a board about a way forward. And, I mean, there's really been five hot areas or hot topics involved in the sign ordinance. And I can normally rattle them off, you know, it's your animated signs. Karen can rattle them off too. It's your animated signs, your flags, your temporary signs, your off-premises signs, and everyone's favorite hay bale signs. So.
I said temporary signs.
Temporary signs, yeah. I said temporary signs, off-premises signs and hay bale signs. So, so those are really the five sticking points. And I mean, I'm, I get the question from my fellow commissioners frequently, what's happening with the sign ordinance? And to my mind, the commission has done its job and put forth language. And whether you choose to change it, keep it, reject it entirely, I don't think it's, I don't think keeping it mothballed is the way to go.
I agree.
So I, coincidentally or not, I had a list of five things that relate to the sign ordinance. And I think these five things reflect what I've heard and including from my constituents who have businesses in basically our main commercial district on 211. So number one, and I mean, I'm just going to keep this very simple because this is basically where I'm coming from on behalf of the majority of my constituents. We don't want, we don't want temporary signs scattered all over the county. I load up my vehicle all the time with "we buy junk car" signs and high-speed internet that we know is not high-speed. So that's the first thing, no temporary signs, you know, put in grass all over the county. Reasonable, attractive, hopefully low-profile signs in the main commercial zone on 211. Political signs obviously are allowed, but with a time limit. And then art and murals, which I think increasingly have become very important to many people in our community to the extent that we're hands-off on art and murals. And I know that always becomes a controversial subject, but I'm just saying, as a broad theme, art and murals should be left alone. And finally, I think Mr. Carney has articulated this very well, better than I could. Our sign ordinance is just, let's keep it simple. And in keeping it simple, I say just go back to the basics, what we, what we want and what we do not want. And then my only question to Ms. Smith, since you've been at the helm of the Planning Commission since I stepped away, summer of 2022, would be if you have any suggestions on how we dive in, in terms of suggestions for meetings, work sessions, public forums, whatever you might have in mind, I'm willing to do it. But I just, I don't want to get lost in the weeds on this and lose sight of the basic things that I think most people would agree we're trying to accomplish. We don't want Rapid County junked up with a bunch of little signs stuck in medians everywhere. And it's starting to happen.
Those are all legal.
I was going to say, those are all the right of way in there.
Well, okay, fine. But let's make sure that.
Yeah.
We get rid of those. And then be reasonable on all these other fronts. That's basically where I'm coming from. And I'm reflecting what my constituents have expressed to me and the majority of them.
Anyone else?
I, I think that I brought it up before, that I think generally, the new provision for the temporary signs just needs to be shortened, just to how more in line with it used to be. I think that if we're going to give hay bale signs to one person, and I said this very vocally last time, I am an adamant First Amendment person, we need to give it to everybody. I, I don't, I'm not going to give it to somebody because they have more land. If we're going to, I mean, it's, so I think if we're going to do it, I want to give it to everybody. That's, that's where I am with that. I do think that we should have a limit on the height of a flagpole for 35 feet because that's the ordinance for our buildings. And other than that, I think it's really important to make sure that businesses get to advertise in the right way. I think that's really important. We don't do much to help our local businesses and we need to do that. Now, I understand some people don't like animated signs and I understand that. However, I think that there is a middle ground that we've got to meet. Because we do have businesses that need to advertise and they need to put up signs. I mean, that's just a reality. I mean, and so we need to address that. And I think it's hard. And I think that the way that we do that is just by size. And I think that we've done a pretty good job of that. But I think if we can address specifically the temporary sign thing, I thought 90 days with a 30-day extension would be more reasonable. And isn't that what it used to be? 90 days with 30?
Kind of.
Kind of.
It, it's not as plain as what was written in the ordinance because it varied based on the type of sign. And there was nothing to stop somebody from just picking it up for an hour and sticking it back in. It's impossible to enforce.
But I mean, to Mr. Woodson's point, I mean, you know, people are going to put signs in the media. You're not even allowed to put signs in the media. Most people don't even know that. And they're going to continue to do it. And it's really, just I think it's a bigger question about what, how do we regulate the things that we know we can regulate?
Yeah.
Which we can't regulate the medians because we don't have control over this.
Yeah, for the temp signs, the, the, the new plan was to require the date of first erection to be posted down the reverse of the sign, period. And that, you know, if it's not there, it's illegal. If it is there and it's more than X days old, it's illegal. If it's there and it's within the date, we'll see you in another few days.
Well, so for instance, and I know we've had a discussion about this, but I mean, there is, there are provisions for wayside stands in our ordinance, and those people are going to need to have seasonal signage. And that's going to look like a bunch of different things in our county. And I know that we have pictures of that. And I know that it's difficult to deal with because it really requires us having small billboards.
Right. And so that's where.
But I think that there is, we need to just figure that out because I think that the orchards that rely on that are really relying on that. And I don't really see any other way around it. So that, that's, that's the feedback that, that I've gotten. I think this is a really hard subject area. I think this is a really hard thing to regulate, for sure.
I think the language that was crafted initially by Gary, Michelle and Art was designed to allow the signs that generally throughout the county already exist. We're not trying to take any signage away from our orchards or our roadside stands at the same time. As we all know, the challenge of Reed v. Gilbert is we can't say, you can have this kind of sign if you're a roadside stand.
You can sell watermelons, but you can't sell corn.
Right. We, we can't, we can't, you know, assign the size of the sign based on the use or the type of business. It has to be, every kind of business can now have this kind of signage. So it is challenging without a doubt. But I, while I hear and know that folks are concerned about a proliferation of signage, I think it's also important that the businesses that we, that we have in the county that rely on us to make good decisions can keep the signs that they need to.
So just big picture, when you met with the Planning Commission, we talked a little bit about timing and how this gets done and the Berkeley Group work that's happening. And I suggested against trying to juggle both sets of balls at the same time, it gets very complicated when you're moving everything around in an ordinance and then also changing this part while you're moving it around. And it was my suggestion at that point, even though I know this is important, that if our focus is on the reorganization and process with the Berkeley Group, then this kind of necessarily has to be bundled into a phase two, which is the who can do what where. And this would be maybe the only phase two, maybe just two signs is the next thing. Now, if the Board wants to charge forward and try to do both at the same time, we'll, we'll give it a good shot. But it's, it's complicated right now, moving things around, trying to move things around and change this is going to be even more complicated.
I just wonder too, if we wouldn't be well-served by going around to the different fire halls and holding listening sessions about this and other matters, the ordinance review in general. I think folks have a lot of input on that. And, and maybe, you know, lesson learned on round one of the sign ordinance, take more public input on the front end so that we don't find ourselves in a challenging position when we get toward the end.
My history has been that you can beg, plead for input until you put something on the line and people are worried. You're not going to do that, are you? Then they'll speak up, which, so this served the purpose. And you got a lot of good feedback. And so to think that we're just going to ask people to come out and give us good comments, they just don't do it. And we've got a good, healthy core now that has been engaged in the sign ordinance. And that's, that's for a reason. Because you're up to the, you advertise the public hearing, you could adopt it. You could adopt it now. And so people are keenly aware of that and want to make sure you know their opinions. And unless and until you get to that spot, it's very hard to engage the public.
I, I just think that there's enough material to talk about here and with ordinance work that's already been edited, that we could go and have engaging conversations throughout the county. And plus, let's not forget, people often like to talk about taxes. And that's coming up as well. So, you know, there could be several topics and it, it doesn't need to be, you know, a whirlwind tour. We could do it one a month or whatever. It's a pleasure of the Board. But I hear that often. And I hear that from people that previously served on, from people that previously served on the Planning Commission. I've heard today again from Diane Bruce. I think it's good. As much as we may all like to think everyone will have an afternoon or evening free to come join us at the courthouse, sometimes it just doesn't work out. And we do need to take a more grassroots approach.
Okay, so that's your practical suggestion?
I, I mean, I, I don't know how else, I don't, I'm not sure what else would yield
That's fine.
results.
We've got a very engaged group that's spread all over the county. So it's possible that we could get someone to each of the fire departments, wherever we hold them, and actually ask someone that's been as engaged to come in and maybe spur some conversation instead of everybody staring at each other. The two areas on this document that we were given, I don't think we've talked about is the billboard and then the use table, which I think because we're trying to make things easy to find and understand, the use table definitely makes good sense.
I think that's a nice idea in theory, but it's very difficult to dissolve all those ideas into a use table. And I, I kind of sit back and wonder at the idea that we're not such a small county. If someone goes in to ask Michelle a question, she can tell them the guidance that they need. And at the end of the day, people, even if there's a chart, people will probably ask our zoning administrator regardless of how easy we think we've made it. Because ultimately, it's her opinion that matters.
I get it. I just don't want people to have to go out if they don't have to.
Um, I have one question, and I don't think Art's here any longer. Gary, I don't know if you can speak to it, but the, the Reed v. Gilbert precedent that arguably was what kicked off this revisiting our very dusty sign ordinance. My question, and I, I guess it's been so long I haven't thought about it, and I should have before tonight, but in the context of Reed v. Gilbert, political signage, how does it fit?
It's a temporary sign. And there's state code that speaks to political signs that, that mimics what Reed Gilbert essentially. And that is that you, you cannot treat political signs differently than you treat other temporary signs. So if you regulate all of your temporary, if you say no temporary signs allowed, arguably you'd be allowed to prohibit political signs. I can't imagine a community that would do that. Or if you just restrict them to a certain size. So political can't, signs can't be a plywood, sheet plywood, you know, 32 square feet. And then all other temporary signs are restricted to two square feet, you know.
Okay, so, so make, is the right word, a corollary to that, let's, let's be straight about this. Hay bale signs, that, or the question of hay bale signs in the context of the discussion came out of a very specific political sign. And now we're talking about hay bale signs. Would it not be, and Van has thought about it a lot more than I have, who can have a hay bale sign if you have more property, less, et cetera. We're talking about size of hay bale signs. Wouldn't the easiest way to go about it without leading all of us down a First Amendment path of doom, wouldn't the easiest way to address it be that we don't talk about hay bale signs or plywood signs or wheat signs or, I just.
Size.
Signs, temporary signs with a time limit.
Quantity and size are the main regulatory factors. And you can absolutely do that. So.
I just feel like we're backing into an overly specific definition or discussion of hay bales because there was something that occurred that some people loved and some people didn't love. And I think it's the wrong approach because it's really a reaction to one thing that happened at a point in time. And we should be thinking more, we should be thinking beyond one point in time.
And so I think that where that grew out of was the function of enforcement. And so county staff is in a position where, right now, the ordinance is really unenforceable because of the constitutional issues. However, once you adopt it, that's going to be cleaned up. And if it's not provided for in the ordinance, you're direct, you're messaging to staff that you want us to send out zoning violations. And so if that's okay, we'll do it.
Yeah, I mean, that's what all of this is about.
That's what all this is about.
I mean, we, we can not even talk about the hay bale signs. You can, you can talk about any sign.
Animated, every kind of sign.
Yeah.
That's right.
But so then, then it becomes really a question about policy, right?
What is the Board's policy? Yeah. And so what do you want to see?
So a size is, fits all. Like you just have a size. And I agree.
Makes it quite easy to regulate.
Everybody should have the same amount of free speech. Boom.
With if and when hay bales show up with a bunch of letters on them that form words, then your notice will be sent.
We want everybody to have hay bales. They can, everybody can.
I mean, however you handle it. Whether they're carved in or carved out.
Yeah. And so that's what it's all about.
They're temporary signs, is my point. And if they're temporary signs or subject to time limits, setting aside the question of square footage.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
I mean, I think that, a time limit, I think most people would agree that that's the key point. Because they're, they're limited. However, the passerby perceives that set of words on hay bales, as long as that set of words isn't permanent and is, is deemed no longer legal after a period of time, I think we're on, it seems, we're on a safe ground.
Yeah, I think.
And I just don't like the idea of calling out hay bale signs because that's what people were fired up about a couple of years ago, regardless of my own politics.
So I said size and quantity, time is, is for temporary signs is the other easy factor to regulate. And if you, if there are clear definitions of those, then enforceability's not too hard, particularly if we require that date of first erection on the sign. Makes enforcement much easier.
All right.
So what's our next move?
Well, my recommendation was let Phase One of the Berkeley Group work play out. If the Board wants to try to juggle it both hands, we'll do it.
Why don't we, why don't we meditate on it for a month? Just keep it as a standing agenda item. I don't want it to fall off the agenda again. I know I didn't give you all a lot of runway this month. I talked to Gary about it last week because it's, it's really, we can't just let it go indefinitely. But I do understand that.
So there is a concern expressed in the public that you could adopt the ordinance at any time.
Okay.
And I don't, and if that happens, if you have it on the agenda every month, you might have that concern every month. And I'm trying to think whether, if, I don't think it's the Board's intention to adopt the ordinance as drafted.
No.
You could.
But if we're contemplating substantive changes.
You could take a negative vote.
We would have to re-advertise.
You could, you could take a vote to deny it, I suppose.
No. All right. I, because in addition, if, if firehouse, town halls, if that's one path, I do think separate and apart from the overall structural review of our zoning ordinance, including the sign ordinance, I don't think it hurts for us to get together and dust it off again, dust off the latest draft, look at all the public input we've received to date and just mull it over together as a group. I, I mean, that's kind of what I, not, I mean, I asked you for your idea, which I appreciate and I don't disagree with it. But what I thought would come out of this is not, well, let's come back in a month and have the same discussion again. It's like, do we want to get into the meat of the language? And I've raised at least some of my concerns about. And I've raised at least some of my concerns about, you know, excessive specificity aimed at one-offs that have occurred in the past, not really being in the direction at least I want to go. And so that, this kind of back and forth with you all in a positive, productive way, I think would be good.
Just a work session?
But to manage expectations rather than having the entirety of the ordinance on the future agendas, the five items Ms. Smith mentioned, you mentioned some items. Maybe you tackle one of those each time or one or two. And you, maybe, can you get your arms around together where you think you are on animated signs or the questions you might have for the public? And, you know, can, if you can kind of come to some consensus there, then maybe you move on to flags or whatever.
I think folks should know, if we're change, we're clearly not intending to adopt it as it is. So if we're making changes, we can't do that without another public hearing.
Right.
So it's, it's not that we're trying to gotcha and keep it on the agenda in perpetuity because we're, we're going to adopt it when you're not looking. It's that we've, at some point, we've got to work on this in order to get it over the finish line. And so that is why I would like to see it continue to be on the agenda. But unless we hone into these couple of details, I, I just don't see that it's ever gonna get done.
I, I, I agree with you. I think that, and I think what Gary's suggesting, I think that if we put it on the agenda for next month and then we pick one of these things and we just start working through it, I think that's a pretty good way of doing it. And if we keep it in the evening session, I know, I know it's going late, but.
No, I think it's great.
I think we should do it. And to Gary's point about having it up here and then maybe people are like, whoa, they're gonna pass this tonight. Maybe people will come out. And we, we were sitting here and I'm agreeing with you, I have no intention of passing this.
Right.
We're gonna need a public hearing.
Yeah, well, we'll need to readvertise.
Yes, but I do think that this is maybe a, a way of keeping it on the, on the forefront of our brain.
Okay, so.
This might take us a while.
So we, so we embed, we embed a limited, basically a limited and scoped work session in a seven o'clock meeting is going forward.
Focus attention on a, on a limited area, so as to not be overwhelmed with the.
Just list off the five things.
Yeah.
We all know them very well. I don't think it, because, you know, organically in the course of our discussion, if we start off with one, it may bleed into another. So I think it's just best to list the five, go with it.
My five are different than your five.
Well, I'll defer to your five.
No, but I mean, there's overlap, but yeah, I mean, I think that's right. So whatever the official five are.
We've had several meetings where we didn't have an evening session.
Right.
And this is something we could have.
Right.
Absolutely. So we might in the next eight, eight months not have an evening session unless we'd have this on there.
Okay.
So, yeah, let's do it.
Well, yeah, because we didn't have any applications at the last month's Planning Commission, so.
Okay, perfect timing.
Be able to take this up in greater depth next month.
Can we get this process rolling before we go on the firehouse tour?
Quietly.
Okay.
You gonna tell Diane?
I'll tell, I'll tell her.
All right, good?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Mr. Woodson, regulation of farm wineries and breweries.
Right, a constituent raised this with me and I, I, I thought Mr. Curry could at least, I mean, I, I alerted him to this. Basically, the idea is that embedded within the, the Falkirk County, thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Embedded within the Falkirk County ordinance, zoning ordinance are some farm winery-related standards, provisions, limitations. And this was brought to my attention and it, I know that we have really been struggling with the question of agritourism activities and unsafe roads and large gatherings, et cetera. And I know that we've been at least thinking through the possibility of an ordinance that would require roads of certain sizes into agritourism-type properties. And I just didn't know if these provisions within the Falkirk County zoning ordinance might be instructive and useful. And so really this was just for discussion to see if, if we might be missing what someone nearby has already done to sort of reel in unregulated activity. And this is again, as a farm wineries, but we've been looking at it kind of more broadly in the context of agritourism, so.
Yeah, and so if you remember the, like usual customarys in the state code, what, what sort of uses typically go along with a farm winery? And those nebulous group of things, those agritourism uses are allowed to do in addition to make wine from grapes that they don't even grow on their property. Buy half their grapes from somewhere in the state. So it appears that Falkirk's tried to pin down that list of things that are in fact usual and customary using slightly different words. I think you can, I imagine there are a lot of different codes across the state, people trying to tackle this. This seems like a decent way to go after it and we know that there are many wineries next door in Falkirk. I, I know we can probably lean on their high-play staff to, who lives here in the county to tell us a little bit about how they're doing this.
Okay.
And see if maybe the, these sort of things would be helpful.
Yeah, I just wanted to raise it for everyone's awareness. And I think it's the sort of thing we maybe, when, when, when we have some time to dig in a little bit and I'll, I'll do additional reading and research in other localities. But I, I think the, the fundamental question we've been trying to address is how do we prevent a public safety issue arising as agritourism uses? And in particular, wineries that we have in the county are hosting events that are pretty well-publicized and sometimes draw big crowds. And the question is, aside from the, the road standard approach that our county attorney instructed us would be sort of a public safety hook that we could use as a locality that would not put us in a position of doing an end around, doing an end around on what the state allows in agritourism areas. I just thought if another nearby locality was or has been successful in opposing standards that we might not have already thought about, then we ought to consider them. So aside from the road question that's still floating out there, that we all seem to not be able to agree is a good idea. So I guess just, I wanted to raise it and maybe we can talk about it in a future meeting in more detail.
It's no doubt that our ordinance, ordinance requirements now are broken for farm wineries. Relative to state code and everything else, they're very old, they need to be changed.
Okay.
And that, that also, it's in the bundle of who can do what where that kind of necessarily has to follow the process and organization of the ordinance. And Rockingham also is usually at the forefront of agritourism, don't need a building code sort of thing, all that. They've, they've really been pushing the limits on that.
Well, ABC has recently changed their manufacturing licenses to require wineries to actually make wine.
Oh, wow, but, but the grapes don't have to come from that property.
No, 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 that's not my point, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, the, the, the spirit of the statute is agricultural and it wasn't.
Right.
And so many wineries, legitimate wineries have actually complained about it that the General Assembly did, yeah, there, there's a fix. And it's not gonna change the ones that currently have licenses. But it does require you to grow grapes and make wine.
That's good.
Where up to now, you.
Very logical.
You needed a handful of grapes, literally, and you needed to squeeze them into a bottle and that was it.
Yeah.
And the rest you could get from elsewhere in the state. But it's changing, so that's good. It's a good thing for us, so.
Don't worry, Donna, the, the wineries will still exist.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, good, I have three in Jackson.
I know.
I do, and you said as much, but I cannot stress enough, I do think it is worth that conversation with the Director of Community Development in Falkirk County because I think it was in twenty twelve that that was adopted. It was pre, I was not with the county in twenty twelve, but as I understand it, it was a painful process. So I would really like for us to take advantage of learning from someone else's mistakes so that we don't have to make it so painful on the three wineries in Jackson.
I'm pretty sure they're growing grapes and making wine all of them.
They are, I see them.
Great.
Good.
If nothing else.
Motion to adjourn.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
You should just be able to use first initials, you guys screwing around.
Who?
Carney and Comer.